I'd like to call this meeting to order, October the 2nd, 2017, the Carrollton Mayor and Council Meeting. At this time, I would like to call on Cameron Keller, Boy Scout Troop 2819, to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by City Manager Tim Grizzard on the invocation. Please stand.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we ask your blessing on this assembly. Father, we pray that the work that we do would be pleasing to you. Father, we thank you for your blessings, for your love. And Father, we pray for this tragic situation that occurred, where all of these families are affected and all this loss of life. Father, we would just pray for your healing hand on this situation. Father, in the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I'm a little behind, I know which one's my mind. It's like everything's missing.
This time, we'll go into item number four, Citizens' Comments. If anybody has anything they'd like to address to the council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and we will be limited to three minutes. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead, like it's gonna be a long meeting anyhow. Number five, minutes. Everybody had a chance to read back over the minutes, and... Anybody want to make a motion?
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries for... Down to section number six, Mayor and Council Announcements.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I would like to, at this time, thank Chief, Police Chief Joel Richards and his staff for assisting me in putting together a police academy for the citizens of my ward. I think we are on week number fi- is it week number five now? Week number five of week number eight. And I said, look, they probably learned a lot from us by rubbing elbows with us, but we've certainly learned a lot from them. We've learned that cases aren't solved overnight. It can take years, if not decades. But we all came in watching Law and Order, and Law and Order shows the crimes are solved within 30 minutes. So sometimes we get impatient with the police in their work, but certainly now, we get to see a more forensic approach to police work. So I would like to applaud you and all the members of your staff who take care of Ward One in those, in those eight, in that eight-week meeting. So I applaud you all for that. Also, I would like to thank the citizens of this town for their quick response to the people who suffered from the hurricanes and other natural disasters. And I'm very proud of the response that our citizens had given. Also, Tim, I would like to, at some point in this meeting, for you to give us an update on our paving projects, most particularly Foster Street. We'll go back to that in just a minute, if you don't mind. And I would like to thank everyone who was involved this past weekend in the Foster Parent Day out at Old McDermott's Farm. We had over 60 foster kids out there, and we had opportunities for people to come out and adopt a child or become a foster parent, and that event was very, very successful. Biggest one we've had. Also, I would like to thank Mayor Hollinsworth and the rest of the council, too, for supporting the items that I placed on the agenda today, with some of the name changings. Also, with recognizing and honoring people in our community who have suffered or lost the battle to cancer. Thank you all for supporting that. And I would like to invite everyone to my Halloween party, which is going to be at Legends West on Fourth Street on the old ball field. And I apologize to them coming down with something, I think it's a change of the weather. But it's gonna be on the old ball field from 5:30 to 7:00. And Peter and his staff have been more than professional over at Legends West. We're certainly proud of that gym. And I heard that we won a special award today for Legends West and the work that we're... Oh, I won the award, but I bet we're gonna give it to the people. So Halloween night, 5:30, Legends West, hope to see you all there. Thank you. And thank you to everybody who's here today. This is one of the biggest, best crowds we've had in a long, long time. So welcome.
We're just gonna move ahead and go to City Managers' Comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the staff for all the hard-pressed work for Hurricane Irma. Thank goodness it did not turn out as badly as we had anticipated. As far as an update on the paving, we have done Fourth Street and River Drive. We plan to do Foster Street next spring. We will patch the bad places immediately, as soon as a contractor can get over there. I know Tommy Holland has made the call to McIntosh to have that done. I'm receiving a number of calls about the paving on the bypass. That is a state project, not a city project. If those lights are aggravating you because they don't work properly, it's because when they mill the road, they mill the control loop out of the ground. They have to put that back, and that's a common occurrence. So they have to put that back when it's over. And so right now, they're running on timers. So that, in a few months, that'll be done, and it'll be back to normal. The haze mill and bypass signal project is supposed to start in October, and that will add turn lanes. That's a very dangerous intersection, but again, that is a state project. And so we're looking forward to seeing that done. And of course, the work at Presbyterian up here is underway, and the contractor's told us he'll be done by the end of November, weather permitting. I've just got a couple of other items. That is, there's a work session on the third floor, Mayor and Council Work Session on the 19th, starting at 5:00 p.m. We also would like to have you consider, if you gentlemen would look at your calendars, December 7th for the... We tried to plan a Christmas party last year with all of our appointed boards, and we just ran out of time. And we'd ask you to look at December 7th and see if that would work for you. And we've not selected a venue yet, but probably the Depot. But it's early enough to plan that, if you gentlemen want to do that. And then I also want to thank Andy and all the staff that worked on Taste of Carrollton, and all the downtown events. Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight, Approval of Agenda Items for Consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of changes, if you don't mind, I would request. We need to reestablish our NSP program. That's the Neighborhood Stabilization Program that was so successful. There is over a million dollars of money in an account in the city's name that we can use for this program. There is a resolution that's attached to the pink sheet in front of you, and for any of the citizens there, they are available out front, if anybody would like to see this resolution. And then I also would ask you to move item seven up to item one, and that would allow Erica to present the Carrollton Corridor Development and Beautification Committee update, because she has another event to go to tonight. So I'm asking that you move item seven to item one, and it's exactly the way the sheet that's on the desk here, and the sheet that's in front of you. And then to add item number 12, which is the NSP Resolution Number 12-2017.
Where you gonna make that motion? I move we adjust the agenda, moving the aforementioned items with the addition to the agenda of Resolution 12-2017, Neighborhood Stabilization Program 1 and 3, continuance to be addressed after the Beard Award for North Park Street to Park Place Sidewalk Project and before board appointments. You may see the attached resolution. Number two, move item seven, Carrollton Corridor Development Committee Update, to be addressed first on the agenda. Erica will be presenting this item tonight. And also, renumber the agenda items accordingly.
Can we have a motion? Can I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries forward or nothing? Moving ahead. Erica. Now it's your first.
First off, thank you for making some adjustments for me. The city is playing host this evening to all of the university presidents in the university system of Georgia this evening at the Depot. And this allows me the chance to go and greet them and welcome them to our historic Depot. The first item on your agenda is one I'm actually very excited to present this evening. And I wanted to talk a little bit about, basically, an update to the Bankhead Highway Corridor Plan, that the Carrollton Corridor Beautification and Development Committee has been working on over the last 11 months. Hopefully, I didn't crucify that. But anyway, Rory, could you pass these out? What you have before you is an executive summary of what our group has been working on for the last 11 months. I briefly want to discuss some of the tasks that we have completed, and then also some of the next steps that we have that lay ahead of us. If you recall, this committee was appointed by the Mayor and City Council in September of 2016. And on the committee, you appointed, and I'm actually gonna list them out, and there were a few folks here this evening. Feel free to raise your hand up if you're here. Mike Patterson is our committee chairperson. Met Lane was a co-sponsor of the resolution that created the CCDBC. Rory Wojcik was also the other council member that co-sponsored the legislation that created the CCDBC. David Godwin is a city school board member, and he's also the senior vice president of the Bank South Mortgage. Michelle Morgan is the Carroll County Commissioner. She also worked for Morgan Oil, which is a family-owned business that operates in three commercial corridors, including the Bankhead Highway Study Area that we're gonna focus in on tonight. Sandra Houston is the City of Carrollton Planning Commissioner, and she's also an associate broker at Berkshire Hathaway Home Services. She's also a member of the Board of Assessors of Carroll County. John Salmon is a broker and the owner of West Georgia Realty. He's also the managing partner of Lake Carroll Mall. That's located also in the Bankhead Highway Corridor. Andy Camp is the Vice President of Business Development for Next Site, which is a retail and commercial development consulting firm. And he was the former Vice President of Economic Development at Carroll tomorrow. Chuck Connolly is our city attorney, and he's also an attorney and partner at Smith Connolly. Christina Davis is a project manager, a senior project manager at Columbia Residential, which specializes in regional mixed-use and multifamily developments. Then myself, who's the Community Development Director. And then Luke Wojcik is a civil engineer with Georgia and West. He has five years' experience of land planning. And then he also provided the group insight on the practicality and feasibility of some of the infrastructure, the conceptual infrastructure improvements that we developed. As you can tell, this group, it's a group, I feel like, of heavy hitters. We brought a diverse set of skills. We all had our own kind of focus areas, but I think we came together. And what we'll present tonight is a reflection of this hard work from this group. The first thing we set out doing was identifying the study area. We chose the Bankhead Highway Corridor to review and do research on first. We recognize that we have several corridors in our community that need to be reviewed, but the Bankhead Highway Corridor seemed to be the one with the most opportunity for redevelopment and economic development. So we chose that corridor first. Our committee basically set out with five tasks. The first task was somewhat of a group think effort. It's oftentimes called a SWOT analysis. It's where we look at and assess the needs. It's basically the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats on the corridor. Things that came up during this task were things like the vacant buildings and businesses on Bankhead Highway, cluttered and dilapidated and abandoned signage. You know, the changing traffic patterns and the desire for commercial development to really be on that Highway 27 corridor and no longer was at Bankhead Highway. The lack of adequate sidewalk. It's really kind of a single-use corridor right now. It's really designed around automobile usage alone. And then that actually folds into the pedestrian-oriented building design, or lack of pedestrian-oriented building design. Lack of bike lanes. The location of the corridor around neighborhoods, but then also the lack of the connection between the two. They're close to existing neighborhoods, but there's no connection between the two. Obviously, we have cluttered overhead utilities. And then we also had a lot of discussion about the mall concept, and about how the mall concept is a dated concept. Really, what is thriving in communities, especially communities our size, are kind of our downtown, our main street concept of what we've got. And from the very beginning, we all discussed, how can we take what we've got going on our main street and extend it down Bankhead Highway and create that neighborhood village like we have on Adamson Square? One thing we also did, one thing we also did out of the gate is there was a discussion about, you know, reduction of lanes, the addition of bike lanes, the addition of sidewalk. And we went ahead and commissioned a traffic study that took into consideration those streetscape improvements. We didn't want to come to you with a plan that reduced lane width if it was something that wouldn't, basically, the traffic patterns wouldn't be suitable for that. And we did commission a traffic study, and that was in the spring of 2017, and it was completed. The results of that traffic study is that we could reduce the lanes, similar to what happens between Cedar Street and the courthouse, where we went from four lanes to basically one lane in each direction with a turn lane. This right here is an example of what we were discussing here. So you've got your bike lane, you've got your sidewalk, and then you've got, you know, one lane of traffic in each direction, and you've got your turn lanes in the middle. And what resulted from that traffic study and that analysis was basically a concept plan that we developed with the help of Georgia and West Engineering. This concept plan, it takes into account the existing infrastructure, but then it also includes, like I said earlier, it includes sidewalks and includes bike lanes. It includes the reduction of basically four lanes and a turn lane to two lanes and a turn lane, a middle turn lane. Go ahead, Libby. And then this concept plan that you see right here is, it would be Phase 1 of a Streetscape Improvement Plan.
Erica, is this just going from Post to Wayback to Cedar Street?
That would be Phase 1, yes. What you see is Phase 1. I couldn't get it on one slide without it being tiny, so I apologize. One of the things that we also discussed was how this proper, or this corridor has been developed over the years. Back to what I had said earlier about the mall concept, where, you know, you basically have strip shopping centers where people enter this vast parking lot, and then you've kind of got a strip mall that services the users. And about how it's really not attractive. It's not attractive to anyone. It's not attractive to people in motor vehicles. It's not attractive to pedestrians. It really takes what should be the nicest part of your corridor, which are the buildings, shoves them to the very back, and then you've got this massive sea of asphalt in the front. And we talked about how that's not very inviting. If we're gonna build sidewalks and we're going to build bike lanes and we're gonna try and encourage that village concept, we also want to push the buildings up towards the street. You know, the emphasis at that point would be given to the architectural elements of the buildings, rather than the parking lots. And the parking lots could be placed basically to the side or the rear of the buildings. You would also want to look at, how can we make the street more appealing? How can we slow traffic down? A couple of things that come to mind are street trees and sidewalks. Like I said, the addition of bike lanes, which would include more bicyclists on that street. All of these things will contribute to the creation of this neighborhood village that we're discussing. We did commission one rendering to show you a little bit of what we were thinking might turn into some site design standards. Libby, can you toggle back and forth? These are the existing conditions. We're kind of perched over the Taco Bell KFC sign. And what you'll see as you toggle, go ahead, let me... Is basically the placement of a building where an existing parking lot is. You've still got your parking that's available, but that building, it could be a medical professional office. It could just be professional office space, or it could be retail. But that building has connections to the sidewalk. It covers up some of what I would say is the, some of the uglies, you know, the big parking lot. On the west side of this drawing, you've got the addition of an infrastructure that's a restaurant. It's got patio space with seating. It's got those connections to the sidewalks. It's also, you've also got bicyclist, you've got pedestrians. And if you look real closely, you have the newly branded water tank with the new logo of the City of Carrollton on it. This is just a sample of what Bankhead might look like. You've obviously got street trees. You've, we've got a lot of work to do to get to this. But our site design standards, we are working towards this type of design. And then we also want to encourage, you know, as we see or need residential growth, but encourage some residential density in this area. I mean, you've got these commercial opportunities, but we've gotta have the residents to be able to support them. In other words, we've gotta have patrons to these businesses and these restaurants and these, you know, doctors' offices and things like that. And so when you look at the overlay, this might be what, you know, some of the provisions you might see. Let me go ahead. We talked a little bit about next steps. Tonight is literally just an information session. The reason we would like to come to you is we would like to go to the community. It's the time, I think. I think it's time to go ahead and meet with the community and get their input. We need to meet with the property owners and the stakeholders in that corridor. We need to meet with the neighborhood, the Lake Carroll neighborhood. And we would like to host a town hall meeting on October the 17th. The location is to be determined. We were trying to find a real special space to do it, but we will certainly publicize that once we get the location determined. But we would like to hear from the community and see what they feel like Bankhead Highway should look like. We also are going to post a visual preference survey. A visual preference survey is basically, literally, it's photographs of what do you prefer for the Bankhead Highway. And you'll have one that might be more auto-oriented, a highway that might be more auto-oriented, or one that's more of a village concept, kind of like the downtown area. We will post that survey on October the 9th, and we'll share it on social media and try to get the word out, because we'd like to get as many respondents as possible.
Erica, and I'm sorry, I think I'm catching a cold. But as we've done in the past with many other surveys, could we make sure, too, that there's some hard copies of those surveys available for people who don't have access to computers?
Absolutely. We can make those available at City Hall on Monday.
And for those who don't have access to computers, too, if I may look into the camera and say it, there are computers at the West Carrollton Recreation Center every day that are open to the public, and at our public library as well.
And that really concludes...
Erica, I'm sorry, right quick. There's a guy trying to get it in the back door. Could someone unlock the back door? Thank you. He should be standing out there. There you go. Thank you.
That's really all I have for you tonight. I would love to answer any questions you may have. Councilmember Wojcik's here. I think Commissioner Michelle Morgan's here, and Chuck Connolly is also here. They have, we've kind of all walked hand in hand through this process over the last 11 months. It's been a, it's been a great task, quite frankly. And we're glad to get to be a part of it. But if you have any questions, I'm available. These are for you to take home. Hopefully, you'll enjoy how we've put it together, but we were trying to basically show you a little bit of what we've been doing the last 11 months.
Erica, do we have any industries or any commercial groups or stores, or even restaurants that have shown interest in the corridor? And as a side note, too, the beautiful thing about this is that we can't go out and get a Red Lobster, or I'm trying to see what that other building looks like it could possibly, or a Macy's, but this, creating this sort of corridor that's beautiful can attract those types of businesses here, right? But do we have any that have shown any interest at all?
I, yes, I have. I have spoken with some individuals about, and I'll kind of be very nonspecific about some professional office space on this corridor. That's actually why we proposed that building right there. It was a little bit...
The big one?
Yeah, the big one. And, you know, I'll say that we have several, we have two brokers that specialize in commercial real estate on our committee. We also have a real estate agent that specializes in residential real estate on our committee. And we also have somebody that's in mixed-use and multifamily development, who's a project manager on our committee. So there have been a lot of discussions about how we might incentivize businesses to come to the corridor. Actually, now that you ask that, I realize I left out Task 3. I apologize, Councilmember Wojcik. One of the things that the committee set out to do is also look at potential economic development incentives. And we, I can tell you what we have done. We've looked at beautification grants. One thing that's been successful in the downtown are some of our beautification grants, where we actually fund up to 50% of projects. And it can be anything from signage to paint. It's been very effective in our downtown area. And we issue up to five grants a year, up to $2,500, to basically make improvements to building, to buildings or signage and things like that. And we talked about extending that down into Bankhead. Some people, if we ask them to, you know, do a new sign or something like that, you know, they don't have the funding to be able to do that. And so we would like to be able to assist through beautification grants for either landscaping or signage, or, you know, improvements to the building and that sort of thing. And then there's another one that's a little, that's gonna take a little bit more time to flesh out the details. We're doing a little bit of legal research on it right now, is the potential for... We're doing a little bit of legal research on it right now, is the potential for some sort of tax incentive program where we do a tax freeze. We have had, and I don't want to overspeak, we've had initial discussions with some of the leadership in Carroll County about them partnering with us for such a program. And what this would be, would not be an abatement, like you see sometimes in industrial projects where they don't pay taxes, this would be basically where their value is frozen for a certain period of time. You could, I think the historic tax credit program's about eight years, but for a certain period of time, if they come in and redevelop a site and spend more than 75% of present day value on the site, for instance, this piece of property right here, if they came in and built that, then they would get to enjoy basically that value of that property frozen for a certain period of time, so they're not, their taxes are reduced for that first eight years. This is something that we would like to pursue. It's recommended in your executive summary. And we feel like we just need enough carrots to get people interested. And I can tell you from the developers that I've spoken with, putting together plans like this and saying, this is where we want to drive this. It's an intentional kind of development approach, but I think they appreciate it, and they know this is where they want us to be. And so we absolutely, you know, want to pursue that, and hopefully it'll work out. I can't answer it right now, though.
Can you recap, just for the sake of public record, could you recap the corridors that you're going to address in this corridor endeavor?
Absolutely. I mentioned that we picked Bankhead because we saw the vast ample opportunity that we had there, and quite frankly, I think I get the most complaints about Bankhead. But we're also going to be looking at Maple Street, at Alabama Street, and then we included Highway 27 or Park Street, because there are some things that we could look at addressing on Park Street, like the lack of sidewalks is a good example. I saw a gentleman pedaling down the road today on a bicycle, and there's no room for him at all, there's no bike lanes, there's no sidewalks, there's nothing, so, in certain parts of that. So although that one doesn't need as much visual improvement, there are some infrastructure improvements we could do to 27 too. We've got, we're doing a lot of work on Alabama Street right now with the sidewalks, or we have just recently completed a lot of work on Alabama Street with the sidewalks, but same thing, you know, we're trying to see where we've got these gaps and where we need more sidewalks. I think you'll see a project later on in your agenda, a bid award later on in your agenda, for more sidewalks. And what we did was we went out and looked, and there was a trail, we're like, this is where a sidewalk needs to happen, so if that's not empirical evidence, I don't know what is, so.
All right. Well, I'd just like to say kudos to you and the entire committee, and good job, and I certainly appreciate your hard work, and I'm excited about it as well.
I'd just like to say thank you to all the committee members for a year's worth of work that we've spent, really just hammering out details, chatting about. We realized that we can't just plant street trees or azaleas and expect people to show up. What we were looking at is really looking at creating incentives to relocate businesses to that entrance corridor to town for beautifying it, but also developing it. And I think what we'll have is something that we can all be proud of, to really showcase what we have in the city. I think this plan and some of these renderings are great examples of what we could see occur. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the committee members, staff members that have helped really create this. I know about a year ago, when I was first running to do this job, that's what everybody was saying, is what can you do, what can we do to redevelop this area? And I think this committee has really helped focus not just on this corridor, but provide an example of what we can see as deliberate growth in our city. So I think this is fantastic.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I also ask everyone to please join me in wishing Erica a happy, happy birthday today as well? So happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
I would say I wouldn't rather, I would rather be nowhere else, but that may not be the case.
That's a good slogan for Carrollton.
Moving ahead, Mr. Wojcik, number two proclamation, October 2017 Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to read a proclamation dated October 2017 proclaiming Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Carrollton, Georgia. Whereas breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States, and remains the leading cause of cancer death among American women. And whereas mammography and, or an X-ray of the breast is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can ever be seen or felt. Early detection and improved treatment is believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer. And whereas researchers, scientists, and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer, during the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause. And whereas we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors that give hope of a better future. Now therefore, with the support of those who continue to cope with breast cancer, I, Walt Hollensworth, Mayor of City Carrollton, Georgia, on behalf of the City Council, extend our deepest respect for survivors and those advocating for prevention and a cure, and in doing so hereby proclaim October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In official recognition whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Carrollton to be affixed on this second day of October 2017. Signed, Gerald Byrd, Mayor Pro Tem, and Walt Hollensworth, Mayor, City of Carrollton.
And Mr. Mayor, I've asked Hope for the Journey and Rose Holly to come up front and accept this along with Melissa Crowder and her cancer organization, who's establishing a cancer ball here as well, and we have some other projects that we're working on. Peter and I are working on with Melissa in the community, so I'd like for them to come up to please, if you may, or if you will, and let them accept this proclamation. And my father is here too, who is a breast cancer survivor, and he just rung or rang the bell last week, so Daddy, if you could come up as well. So thank you.
Let's give them a hand as they come.
Melissa, can you come on inside? Can y'all sit in? Oh, y'all want to sit? Can y'all? [inaudible]. Play the deal, everybody.
Item number three. Resolution 10, 2017, naming a pavilion, naming a pavilion at Legends Park, CB Ward Pavilion. Councilman Walt Byrd.
Yes, sir. I guess we'll now call Legends West the award-winning Legends West, since we did receive two state awards for that wonderful park today. But this comes straight from the people, as a request from our citizens who demanded we do something for Mr. Ward. We decided to name the pavilion at Legends West in his honor. This is from the office of the mayor of Carrollton, Georgia, to resolution, resolution 10-2017, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Carrollton, Georgia to honorarily name the pavilion Legends West Park II, CB Ward Pavilion, and this will be the wood structure itself named in his honor. The park will still be called Legends West. Whereas Mr. CB Ward has dedicated over half of his 90 years of life to this community and has demonstrated his deep and genuine love for the city of Carrollton and the surrounding areas. And whereas Mr. CB Ward worked in the Carrollton City Schools for 43 years as an English teacher, social worker, and administrator. And whereas Mr. CB Ward served in the schools during the mid to late 1960s, demonstrating courage, integrity, tenacity, commitment, and service to humanity during and after the integration of Carrollton City Schools and Carroll County. And whereas Mr. CB Ward actively crusaded to eliminate barriers and bring peace and understanding, all of which has made for a better world today. And whereas the mayor and council of Carrollton find it only fitting that the pavilion located in Legends West Park be named the CB Ward Pavilion, in honor of his outstanding service to the Carrollton community. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Carrollton hereby honorarily name the pavilion at Legends West Park to the CB Ward Pavilion. Adopted this second day of October 2017, mayor and city council of Carrollton, signed, Gerald Byrd, Mayor Pro Tem, City of Carrollton, and Walt Hollensworth, Mayor, City of Carrollton. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we ask our honorary Mr. CB Ward to come up front, and let's take a picture with him. Come on, Mr. Ward.
Hi, Mr. Ward. I came to see you.
Everybody else?
Everybody else. Hands up, you were his student or he served as an administrator over you?
Yeah, my neighbor.
One more time for Mr. Ward.
Gerald, of course, and a person that's not here tonight, Danny Dyer. He was one of my little pupils when I had West Side School. I also thank Morse Chapel for coming to honor me, and I'm very touched by you, very proud of you. There's a lady there who runs everything, that's Elizabeth. And there's a gentleman who pays for everything, Wesley. And there's my minister, Dr. Lindrum. Where's Dr. Lindrum?
Yep, yep.
And Dr. Jack Jenkins at church there, he makes sure that we are entertained with beautiful music. And all of the rest of you. Annette, coming down from Atlanta, thank you so much. And Ms. Tooksberry, the former librarian, my favorite librarian. Thank all of you so much for honoring me with such a gesture. Thank you so much.
We thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ward.
[applause]
Moving ahead with Resolution 11, 2017, naming of a Lakeshore Tennis Court to Coach Rico North Court.
This proclamation comes to us from the office of the mayor of Carrollton, Georgia. This is a resolution, it's Resolution 11-2017, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Carrollton, Georgia, to honorarily name one of the six Lakeshore Tennis Courts to Coach Rico North Court. Whereas tennis coach Kelly Rico North was native to Carrollton, Georgia, and a graduate of the Carrollton City Schools, and where he was an outstanding athlete. And whereas Coach Rico was the Carrollton Parks and Recreation Department's first African-American tennis instructor. And whereas Coach Rico was always instructing and practicing on one special tennis court at the Lakeshore Tennis Courts with baskets of balls, rackets, and kids, where he exposed them to the world of tennis. And whereas Coach Rico lived and loved tennis, learning and absorbing as much information and skill as he could while fulfilling his goal to bring serious tennis to the hometown and introduce tennis to those who would not otherwise get the opportunity. And whereas the city of Carrollton was saddened by the passing of Coach Rico on March 8, 2017. And whereas the mayor and city council of Carrollton recognized that this special tennis court of the Lakeshore Park Tennis Courts is where it all began for many youth to learn the game and for Coach Rico to make an impact on so many lives. And find it only fitting that this special court where Coach Rico taught tennis instruction be named as Coach Rico North Court in honor of this outstanding service that he did for the Carrollton community. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Carrollton do hereby honorarily name this special court of the Lakeshore Park Tennis Courts to Coach Rico North Court. Adopted this second day of October 2017, signed Gerald Byrd, Mayor Pro Tem, City of Carrollton, and Walt Hollensworth, Mayor, City of Carrollton. And at this time, I would like to ask that his mother, Ms. Sue, if you could raise your hand, please, Ms. Sue North, come up at this time, and the rest of his family and friends who are here, please come up. His sister, his two sisters are here as well. Let's give them a hand as they come, celebrate Rico with us.[1778.66][1778.66][applause]
I would like to read the conditions attached to the zoning. Will abide by the concept plan, uh, will abide by, conceptually by the site plan. What that means is it is not exact. It leaves the staff the leeway to adjust slightly, uh, lines and, and little features, but generally it will abide by the site plan. All lots forty-five feet wide, setbacks on the front twenty, uh, feet, rear fifteen feet, side zero, uh, minimum clearance between structures ten feet, private alley access, uh, drive rear loaded, exterior construction to be brickstone, hardy plank or stucco. HOA will be responsible to maintain front and rear landscape as well as all hardscapes, uh, parking in front of, uh, for visitors and guests. Minimum square footage of homes to be no less than thirteen hundred and fifty square feet and a maximum of twenty-five hundred and eighty square feet. Uh, access is planned for the homeowners to the Green Belt and to Sunset Hills Country Club, uh, and all homes will include a front and side or rear porch. Uh, then staff analysis stated that any new connections to the Carrollton Green Belt shall be approved by the Friends of Carrollton Green Belt LLC. And if you know, if you know the property, you know the Green Belt is just basically right there. So, uh, that is, uh, staff's report.
Is anyone here from the, I?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jeff Smith, and I'm representing, uh, John Polk, uh, nine zero nine Roma Street. If y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The best I remember in my old days, this was a planned unit development that Chester Ralphs had up, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Uh, and then we, it was rezoned back to office and institution.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions for Sherman?
I wanted to ask you a couple because I, I live in a neighborhood that's very, very similar to this. Um, and I, when I, and looking at your, your overall plan here, I thought about some of the problems that we're having, like additional parking. If I want to have a party or have company over, um, that's a challenge because our parking is so limited. And then if you want to own more than one car, it's a problem because there's nowhere to put it. Um, have you addressed those problems at all? And then trying to understand the, I guess, the bird's eye here that you've given us, that concave, um, I don't, I don't know any other word for it, than a little alley to the, that's right under number twelve, that, is that parking for that particular unit?
That is the driveway that would be, it's a one-way drive. So you pull into the complex and you'll turn right and there'll be one way all the way around. Um, each house will have a two-car garage and there'll be ample parking in the driveway for two more cars to be stacked behind. So a total of four cars can be parked on site.
You've answered my question.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Uh, this does not say that these house plans are binding, and although we don't, would not want them to be, you know, one hundred percent binding, we realize you need some flexibility. Are the facades binding? Could we, could we add the statement like you did on your site plan that they are generally conceptually binding?
Generally, yes. That, they will, as far as, uh, the size and scale, they are, are about exact. Now, there may be some cosmetic features that are different, but, um, generally that's going to be, uh, the style.
If, uh, the, the elected officials would agree to that, I'd like to add that as a condition. And again, I'm not trying to tie you to this exact plan, but just that it be generally what you're proposing and staff would have the flexibility work with you.
Absolutely.
So it appears it's come over cottage style.
Yes, it's kind of like a, uh, it's between the cottage style and craftsman style too, like a modern style farmhouse.
I like them. They look good. And price range is about, I remember reading it, but I can't remember exactly how much.
Starting around two, two eighty.
Either the smaller ones that look like my house right there, those are about two eighty as well. Yeah.
Anybody have more discussion on this?
I just like the density next to the Green Belt, I think. Having more infill like that will, um, will be something we'll probably see throughout the city. So seeing what the Green Belt has done in town, um, just a different form of transportation throughout the community, and it's good to see more infill rather than expansion. I like the idea.
Is anybody, thank you, sir. Is anybody here like to speak against this motion before we do any taking further action? Seeing none. Um, have a motion we approve on the conditions that Tim stated?
Again, I just asked that you make the, uh, building plans general, in building facades generally, conceptually binding.
I'll make a motion, um, to, uh, to pass this with the facades generally, or binding generally based on the pictures, uh, as well as the zoning conditions as, as stated earlier.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we know, we need to vote on the motion first?
Second.
Got a second. I was a motion, he's a second.
Motion and second. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Now we'll vote on the project. Um, can I get a motion? We had to vote on the amendment.
No, it was stated in the original motion.
Okay, my bad. Motion passed. Next item is zoning request, uh, number six. Tim?
Uh, and before I describe this zoning request, I do want to state that, uh, Councilman Lane is, as y'all know, is a trial attorney, and he is in court across, on the other side of Atlanta, so he sends his regrets. Uh, with that said, the next item is one thirty-one Loveren Road, which is better known to me as Blue Water Rope. Uh, Mr. John Newell Junior, who's here tonight, and he is the owner of the property. Uh, he has petitioned that the, uh, light industry, industry zone property M one be rezoned to C two general commercial with a waiver to allow the continued use of production of goods at the location. To, to put it in plain English, he wants to continue to make rope at the Blue Water Rope Factory, but he wants to be able to sell up to six cars on the slot, and this is, uh, a business he wants to do to help someone who is, uh, coming out of incarceration. And I will, with your permission, let him describe it further. And I will say that the, uh, P and Z Board approved this unanimously, recommended approval unanimously.
Miss New?
Any questions?
Um, yeah, you mentioned in here that this will be, I'm in the notes, if I'm remembering correctly when I read them, that this would be a pilot program?
Yes.
What's the timeline?
Well, I want to make sure that he has something started before I die because his only income would be the sale around paying him as a live-in caregiver.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we're looking at four to five years. He's going to have to have something going. It'll start off small. Uh, it, it's not meant to stay there in the long run, but he's got to have a place to start. And then if he, if it moves faster than that, and it's primarily to prove to me that the concept that he had before he was incarcerated works here in Carrollton. Uh, we've already done another pilot, uh, up in Chattanooga, and it's working in that area. His son is doing that. So I think it will work, but I, before I start pumping lots of money into it, I want to see if it works in this area. If it does, then I'll back him, and we'll move it off into a regular lot at some other location. The, the office may stay there so we don't have to play the politics of changing offices around everything. But I got a building that, that's I can use and an office in there, so all we have to do is assign and, and a, a landline and a place for him to work, and most of the sales will be through internet sales. And it's, it's something he's done before, so it, he does what he call wholesaling. He'll sell to even the buy-sell lots, because he'll get preferred, uh, vehicles out from dealers he knows, uh, up in there, up in Chattanooga, and also down in this area. They'll all be, have Carfax reports in them, they'll all have the, uh, the going over to check, check it out and certified. So he's on, he's dealing the low, the, the higher end, uh, that is, is, should be cars that would, people will come back to him for additional when they want it. So I think it always is going to need a chance, and that's all I'm, I'm going to give him. And I've got a few years left to do it. I don't know how many, but, uh, I want to get him started at least and for some, before something happens to me. The money will still be there for him to use even if I'm gone, so I've taken care of that.
Thank you, Miss New.
I applaud you for this endeavor. So just to make sure we understand too, um, these are commercial vehicles that he'll sell, or are they just like cars?
He said for this area, it'll be SUVs, pickup trucks, and some of the, the smaller cars.
Okay.
I've got a huge parking lot up there, but we're only going to put six, six cars, I think from the six, we can tell what we want to know.
That's great.
You need to buy a car, let me know, let me know.
Well, I just bought one, I might need to sell you one, because I don't want it.
We're not going to have any dancing girls or balloons or loudspeakers and anything like that.
Anybody have any more questions, Miss New? Thank you, Miss New.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak against this rezoning? Seeing none, we'll move ahead.
Just clarify the conditions. Again, there's only two conditions on the staff recommendation. One is that car sales be limited, no more than six cars on the property at one time. The other, they be no more than one freestanding side for both uses. So in other words, he can only have one sign, uh, and those are the only restrictions.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote or make a motion. I'd like to make a motion, we approve.
And I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Byrd. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. No opposed. Moving along. Uh, Joe, two thousand eighteen Edward Byron Memorial Grant?
Yes, Edward Byron Memorial Grant that we apply for every year for the Drug Task Force. Uh, for some reason now, the CJCC, which is who the money goes to Georgia Criminal Justice Courting and Counsel, wants us to notify the mayor and council that we have applied for this grant. It's federal money, again, distributed through the state. The Drug Task Force is right here, I'm chairman of the board, um, and the money is, flows through the city of Carrollton and has since two thousand eight, since its inception. They just wanted it to, um, Joe Chestnut is the GBI agent, who's the special agent in charge. He couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to present it on behalf of the West Metro Regional Drug Enforcement Office. I think you have the same memo that he sent to me in your package if you have any questions about it. The amount of the grant is three hundred and fifty-three thousand four thirteen dollars, and that's reimbursement to us. We have agents assigned to it, as you can see, Atlanta PD, La Grange PD, Hurd County SO, Carroll County SO, Coeeta District Attorney's Office, GBI, Allen PD, Valorka PD, and Peachtree City at this time. Others have inquired about coming on. We cover twenty-two counties out of the location right across the street here.
Any question?
I don't think there's any action you have to take.
I don't think there's any action we take on this.
Maybe we just have to notify and have it put in the minutes.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Item number eight, Bit Award, Green Belt, Alabama Street Trailhead. Mr. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor Hollinsworth. Uh, the city applied for a recreational trail grant and received that grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to install a trailhead on the Little Talapusa River at the bridge, uh, on the Mount Zion Highway. This is actually behind the old Pitt Store and on the old W.C. Grizzard property. Uh, there is a planned view of this, uh, trail. And I will say that the P and Z board approved this unanimously, recommended approval unanimously.
Ms. New?
Any questions?
Um, yeah. You mentioned in here that this will be, I'm in the notes, if I'm remembering correctly when I read them, that this would be a pilot program?
Yes.
What's the timeline?
Well, I want to make sure that he has something started before I die, because his only income would be the sale around paying him as a live-in caregiver. And I think we're looking at four to five years. But he's going to have to have something going. It'll start off small. It's not meant to stay there in the long run, but he's got to have a place to start. And then if he, if it moves faster than that, and it's primarily to prove to me that the concept that he had before he was incarcerated works here in Carrollton. We've already done another pilot up in Chattanooga, and it's working in that area. His son is doing that. So I think it will work, but I, before I start pumping lots of money into it, I want to see if it works in this area. If it does, then I'll back him, and we'll move it off into a regular lot at some other location. The office may stay there, so we don't have to play the politics of changing offices around everything. But I got a building that, that's, I can use, and an office in there, so all we have to do is assign and, and a landline and a place for him to work. And most of the sales will be through internet sales. And it's, it's something he's done before, so it, he does, what do you call it, wholesaling? He'll sell to even the buy-sell lots. Because he'll get preferred vehicles out from dealers he knows up in there, up in Chattanooga, and also down in this area. They'll all be, have Carfax reports in them, they'll all have the, the going over to check, check it out and certify. So he's on, he's dealing the low, the, the higher end. That is, is, should be cars that people will come back to him for additionals when they want it. So I think it always is going to need a chance, and that's all I'm going to give him. And I've got a few years left to do it. I don't know how many, but I want to get him started at least, and for some, before something happens to me. The money will still be there for him to use, even if I'm gone, so I've taken care of that.
Thank you, Ms. New.
I applaud you for this endeavor. So just to make sure we understand too, these are commercial vehicles that he'll sell, or are they just like cars?
He said for this area, it'll be SUVs, pickup trucks, and some of the, the smaller cars. I've got a huge parking lot up there, but we're only going to put six, six cars. I think from the six, we can tell what we want to know.
That's great.
You need to buy a car, let me know, let me know.
Well, I just bought one, I might need to sell you one. Because I don't want it.
We're not going to have any dancing girls or balloons or loudspeakers and anything like that.
Anybody have any more questions, Ms. New? Thank you, Ms. New.
Alright, thank you.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak against? This rezoning? Seeing none, we'll move ahead.
Just clarify the conditions. Again, there's only two conditions on the staff recommendation. One is that car sales be limited, no more than six cars on the property at one time. The other, they be no more than one freestanding side for both uses. So in other words, he can only have one sign, and those are the only restrictions.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote? Make a motion. I'd like to make a motion we approve.
And I second that motion.
Second, my Mr. Byrd. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. No opposed? Moving along. Joe? Two thousand eighteen Edward Byron Memorial Grant?
Yes, Edward Byron Memorial Grant that we apply for every year for the Drug Task Force. For some reason now, the CJCC, which is who the money goes to Georgia Criminal Justice Courting Council, wants us to notify the mayor and council that we have applied for this grant. It's federal money, again, distributed through the state. The Drug Task Force is right here, I'm the chairman of the board, and the money flows through the city of Carrollton, and has since two thousand eight, since its inception. They just wanted it to, Joe Chestnut is the GBI agent, who's the special agent in charge. He couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to present it on behalf of the West Metro Regional Drug Enforcement Office. I think you have the same memo that he sent to me in your package, if you have any questions about it. The amount of the grant is three hundred and fifty-three thousand four thirteen dollars, and that's reimbursement to us. We have agents assigned to it, as you can see, Atlanta PD, LaGrange PD, Hurd County SO, Carroll County SO, Coeita District Attorney's Office, GBI, Valden PD, Valorka PD, and Peachtree City at this time. Others have inquired about coming on. We cover twenty-two counties out of the location right across the street here.
Any question?
I don't think there's any action you have to take.
I don't think there's any action we take on this.
Maybe we just have to notify and have it put in the minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
I don't remember, bid award, Green Belt Alabama Street Trailhead. Mr. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor Hollinsworth. The city applied for a recreational trail grant and received that grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to install a trailhead on the Little Talapusa River at the bridge on the Mount Zion Highway. This is actually behind the old Pitt's store and on the old W.C. Grizzard property. There is a planned view of this trailhead there. I want to state that the Richards family bought the property, the, the three, I think it was about three and a half acres from the W.C. Grizzard estate. And then the Pitt's store was, in a roundabout way, paid for by the Carroll County Water Authority. We did some horse trading on some property in their old office, and I won't try to go into all the details, but the bottom line is, it was about a forty thousand dollar purchase. And they traded us some real estate that we sold to another individual at a discount. And so effectively, they made that investment in our green belt for us, for that property. Again, the grant is for a hundred thousand dollars. We've received four bids, and the low bid was Macintosh Specialty Services in the amount of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. That means the, means the city will have to pay thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars, and will receive a facility out there, counting, counting the property, that's worth several, several hundred thousand dollars. So we think this is a great investment, and we ask that you award this contract to Macintosh Specialty Services.
And Tim, just to clarify, this is the West Carrollton Trailhead, in West Carroll, on Alabama Street?
It will also eventually have a, a portage point to put in kayaks onto the river.
That's awesome, in West Carrollton?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my gosh.
We have a motion to approve?
I move, we approve the bid award to the aforementioned, did you mention the company?
I did, it's Macintosh Specialty Services. They are the paving company that does the road patches around town.
The project.
They're well-known.
Yes, sir, the project to Macintosh Specialty Services for the Alabama Street Trailhead Project of the Green Belt.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? None? Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have another bid award, University of West Georgia Plant Ops Drive Improvement Projects. Mr. Grizzer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Holland was going to present this, and he's had some dental work this afternoon, so he's not able to talk. This is one of those projects that is done on the university campus and that they are paying for, but they do this through an intergovernmental agreement with the city. It, it allows them to encumber money past the end of their fiscal year, and therefore they don't lose that money. And so although this is a city contract, it will be reimbursed, the city will be reimbursed by the university. There is a lot of paving going on in the area of Z six, and on University of West Georgia Drive. They wanted to add to that project and pave up toward plant ops, and that would be under a different contract. And they added, they asked that we do that in our intergovernmental agreement and bid this project out, and we did. We received three bids, and the low bid was Rayland Construction in the amount of three hundred twenty-five thousand fifty-five dollars. And I ask that you award that to Rayland.
Can I have a motion? To approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid award to Rayland.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Assume you're ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries, all opposed? None? Bid award, Fire Station Twenty-two Construction Project. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor Hollinsworth. As you know, in the spring, due to a tornado, we sustained severe damage to our fire station on Brumelow Road. And we had it evaluated by a structural engineer, and he determined that it had to be torn down and it could not be salvaged. We hired an architectural firm to, to design a new fire station that would have a similar facade to our newest station on Northside Drive. We also, as you know, negotiated with the University of West Georgia Foundation for the corner lot on Brumelow and Loveron. And we're all excited about that location. Our architect, as y'all know, we're chasing the construction cost upward. And our architect did an, an estimate on the cost of this project, and he said it would be one point six million dollars. We went back and looked at the cost of the fire station that was built in two thousand nine. It is slightly larger, but only on its open space, and it cost one point six million. So we received bids from six different companies. The low bid was one point four eight five million, and that is with J and R Construction. That is Lynn and Jack Joyner, they have an office in town. We feel really good about this price, based on what we spent in the past and what the architect's estimate was. Joyner actually built the evidence building right behind this building. They built a lot of schools in the area, they're very, very qualified. And again, we had a lot of bidders, and prices ranged to just under two million dollars. We also sat down with them and negotiated away some costs that we think aren't necessary. One being that there's a generator included on this site right now. We think we can get a federal grant for that generator, so we want to put in the conduit for it, but not buy the generator right away. Similarly, there's a grit and grease removal chamber that is not needed, because we won't be washing trucks inside or changing oil inside. And so we've cut down about a hundred thousand dollars out of this price, but we ask that you award this to J and R Construction. Also want to say that we expect substantial payment from the insurance company for the damage. They have given us an initial payment of three hundred thousand. They ask for a formal estimate to replace the station exactly as it was before. That estimate was one point two million. So I cannot guarantee you what they're going to reimburse us. We are certainly asking for more than one point two million dollars. They have been really good to pay when we've had damage in the past. But I have to say this, if they don't pay another nickel, we've still got to have a fire station. So with that long soliloquy, I just want to ask you again that you would award this any amount of one point four eight five million dollars to J and R Construction.
Any questions, any discussion?
Yes, Tim, we had earlier talked about the inclusion of some safety issues to make this firehouse more user-friendly. And I know we came up with a solution to that. Could you remind us of what, because I, let me say this too, I think that's important, since this product, this, this project is a product of a catastrophe. If we could use this as a learning opportunity to teach people about the safety of finding shelter in storms, maybe you could elaborate on that a little bit, what the solution is?
Surely will, several things. One is that we do want a, this is right on the green belt, and we do want a bathroom in that area for the green belt. We don't want it attached to the fire station. It, just due to the way that the trucks will circulate, there's other property out there closer to the green belt, and we want to build a separate freestanding bathroom. We want to put the alcove in it that you described, and put some information into the, to teach people about safety. Then we also looked at, there are actually, I'm going to call it a trailer for the lack of a better term, but there are training trailers that you can move around to schools or whatever to teach children about fire safety. The county actually owns one, so that's not included in this bid. That's something we plan to bring back to you in the near future.
Alright. More questions?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion that we grant J and R Construction the award to build Fire Station Twenty-two on Loveron Road.
I have a motion, can I get a second, please? Have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of granting J and R Construction Fire Station, please raise your hand. Or anybody opposed? None? Thank you very much, gentlemen. Bid award, North Park Street to Park Place Sidewalk Project.
Thank you, Mayor Hollinsworth. As you may have noticed, along North Park Street, which is Highway twenty-seven, between Park Place Apartments and the green belt where it crosses at Kingsbridge Road, there is a worn path where people walk. And we love to put sidewalks where people have already walked the path like we did on Alabama Street. We, Erica and team, applied for a grant to build this project with, and this is a Georgia DOT Multimodal Safety and Access Grant. And we were awarded that grant. We went to, it, it requires that the city pay thirty percent of this project. We went, we solicited sealed quotes on this, because it was under a hundred thousand. We didn't have to do the, the month-long advertisement. We received three bids. The low bid was, again, Macintosh Specialty Services in the amount of seventy-three thousand two hundred forty-five dollars, and the city will have to pay thirty percent of that. That is a stunningly low number. We expected around a hundred thousand dollars, and this will be a well-used project. So we recommend that you award this to Macintosh.
I'd just like to say, in this meeting, we've looked at three different projects, all with grants totaling over five hundred thousand dollars. I wanted to say thank you to our city staff for not just looking for those, but securing them. What that does is really pass on savings to the people in our city. I applaud you for doing that, thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt?
Yes, sir, I move, we grant the Macintosh, the bid award for the North Park Street to Park Place Sidewalk Apartments. To Macintosh, yes.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Four to zero. Thank you, gentlemen, again. We're moving right along.
Thank you, Mayor.
Resolution twelve of two thousand seventeen, Neighborhood Stabilization Program, One and Three Continuance. Mr. Grizzer?
Thank you, Mayor Hollinsworth. As you know, this city has, since two thousand nine, has participated in a, what we call the NSP Program, Neighborhood Stabilization Program, where it received federal money to buy substandard houses, to fix those houses up, and to sell them to people who might not otherwise be able to afford a home. It is not, the people who are able to buy have to qualify for a loan, but it does help them with down payments. It forgives the cost of that down payment if they stay in that home a number of years. Again, this is an ongoing program. When we reviewed the records, we would, we wanted, and I say we, Chuck and I wanted a little better approval to do this project, because what is hysterical, historically gone on, maybe hysterically even, is what has historically gone on, is the city manager is buying and selling property, and it doesn't come before you each time. There's too much, there's too many transactions, and we need to be able to continue doing that. And so that's basically what this resolution does. There is an NSP one program and an NSP three program. Georgia does not have the NSP two program. So this would authorize us to use this program. There's over a million dollars in the bank in the city's name, but we, it is restricted. It would allow us to use that money for this program. And if we don't use that money, if we don't continue with the program and close it out, there is some possible penalty that the city might have to pay back to DCA, and we don't want to do that. With that said, I would defer to our attorney.
I just echo what you say, but I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions? I don't believe there are.
Just to clarify, what this is doing is allowing the city manager to approve purchases? Is that correct?
That's right. It's, it is more or less reauthorizing the city's participation in the NSP program, and giving the city manager the authority, frankly, that the city manager has had leading up to this point, but just making sure that it's clear in the resolution.
Not just on the NS, not with, just, not exclusively to NSP or everything?
This is strictly for the NSP.
Okay, got you, Tim Ford.
So we're taking this away from the Housing Authority?
I don't, Tim and I had that discussion today.
They really never had it. It really was always ours. What happened is, we had an employee here that was running it. When he moved over to be executive director of the Housing Authority, he took, he was kind enough to take it with him and do the legwork for us, but it was always a city program.
Okay. Just clarifying, I'm just... Any more questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion we adopt?
Make a motion, we adopt Resolution twelve, two thousand seventeen, for the continuance of Neighborhood Stabilization Programs, One and Three.
Have a motion, do I need, need a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Byrd, thank you very much, gentlemen. All in favor, please raise your hand. Four, all opposed? Zero? Board appointments, Park and Recreation Commission. Mr. Grizzer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make this quick, and then Mr. Meyerhofer's back here and, and can answer more specific questions. There are three people whose terms are up. Chairman Glenn McGinnis, who would like to be reappointed. Mr. Chris Collins, who cannot, who is not eligible to be reappointed. And Mr. Ed Reddish, who is stepping down. So we ask that you reappoint Chairman Glenn McGinnis. And then there are four names there for you to pick two other board members from. Mr. Ricky Walker, Mr. Greg Waldrop, Ms. Kim Hilbert, and Ms. Tanya Pittman. So again, we ask that you reappoint Mr. McGinnis and select two from that list of four. And I ask Mr. Meyerhofer to chime in here.
We wanted to give you a whole set of names that you could choose from and go from there. So any one of these four would be willing to serve, so whichever ones you guys think is fine with us.
Opinions, gentlemen?
I, I'm feeling strongly about Mr. Ricky Walker.
I know Mr. Walker.
Uh huh. And I'm also feeling strongly about Mrs. Tanya Pittman. Tanya Pittman is an amazing woman.
She is.
I worked with her for many, many years in the school system, working with special needs children. And she gets down on the floor, and she has a very special relationship and a very special bond with children who have special needs, so...
She is heavily involved with our Special Olympics, so...
Yes, we need more people like Tanya Pittman in the world, and Ricky Walker. I make a motion that we, from the list as presented to us by Director Meyerhofer, that we pick Mr. Ricky Walker and Mrs. Tanya Pittman as our new rec. department commissioners.
And then Tanya?
Oh, and Glenn McGinnis as the newly appointed chair.
Peter, Glenn, will the chair be chosen?
Well, she's at an October meeting, but he's finishing up this term right now.
Okay, okay, so he's interim.
But y'all will, but y'all will choose.
We'll vote on that.
Y'all choose that yourselves, not us.
Yes, sir.
And I amend that motion to say we are reappointing Glenn in that position.
Sounds good.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Four, all opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Board appointment, Planning Commission. Tim?
Oh, as you all know, Jim Dalton was on our P and Z commission, has moved out of town and has resigned from that board. We have an opening, and I think Mr. Waters has someone he'd like to nominate.
I'd like to nominate Jay Nix. Jay's here tonight, raise your hand, Jay. Jay and I worked together at Southwire for many years, know him very well. He's also a, he's an engineer at Southwire. He lives in Oak Mountain, Gulf, involved in the community out there. Shows up to POA meetings and yells at me and Tim when we, when we're there. But Jay, you expressed interest in getting more involved in, in local stuff and, and, and politics. And he and I have had discussions about planning and zoning and, and our housing challenges. He's followed what we've been dealing with for the last year and a half or so, and, and we're of like mind for the most part there as well. But I think Jay would do a very good job on, on the P and Z board of replacing Jim Dalton, so I'd like to nominate Jay.
Are there any more nominations? Hearing none, do I have, have a motion for Mr.? Hearing none, do I have a, have a motion from Mr. Byrd, I mean, from Jim, Mr. Waters?
I have a motion for Jay Nix, yes.
I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Byrd. No more discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries, all opposed? None, four to zero. One more. Board Department, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Mr. Grizzer?
One more, we're done. C A, C V B?
Can't leave.
Come back.
He didn't hear you.
He didn't hear.
The Carrollton Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, Board Member Shannon Monday has moved out of state, and appointment needs to be, appointment needs to be filled on the unexpired term. The board itself nominated Terrence Garrett, who is the general manager of the Hampton Inn. And I spoke to his cousin, Ben Garrett, and he was resoundingly supportive of this nomination. They're not cousins, I'm trying to be funny at like, this late. But with that said, the, the way that board is made up, it has, it has to be made up of certain people from certain businesses, and this spot is, has to be from hotel motel representative. So again, they've recommended Mr. Garrett, and he is local and operates a local motel here.
Any discussion? I have a motion.
So move.
I have a motion from Councilman Byrd. I'll make the second on this one, how about that? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries, four to zero. Now I would like to entertain a motion from the board, or that we dismiss.
Motion dismissed.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
This meeting is dismissed, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Good night, y'all.